Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, July 8th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those who approve the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Moving on, approval from the minutes on the meeting held Monday, June 10th, 2019. Do I have any requests for edits or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Removed.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion and second. All those who approve the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
The minutes from the June 10th meeting are approved. Alright, we have two public hearings on tonight. The first one is for Oak Point Elementary School Site Plan and variance number 2018-02. This is a request for variance from Shoreland Code to allow impervious surface to exceed the city code requirement of 30%. It's a site plan review on 23.05 acres. Will the proponent of the project please step forward? Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, thanks for having me tonight.
Thanks for coming. If you would, would you please say your name and spell it for the record and tell us about your project?
Jay Pomeroy with Anderson Johnson Associates on behalf of the school district, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation. As you mentioned, the proposed parking lot at Oak Point is up for discussion tonight. We're looking for two recommendations for approval. The variance from a Shoreland Code to allow impervious surface to exceed 30% and for the site plan review. Oak Point sits on actually two parcels, and as it's noted in your narrative, the parcel proper is about just over 23 acres where the school sits, parking lot, playground, school drives, et cetera. There is an adjoining property just to the west of almost another eight acres. And it's worth noting, Oak Point Elementary sits here, of course, but so does Eagle Heights Spanish Immersion School, and that's kind of important as we get into the site plan part of the project. It supports about 1,700 students, so there's quite a population there of parents dropping off and buses coming in and out. And again, I'll get to that in a moment. But first, again, the variance that we're looking for is to increase the hard surface, or the impervious, I should say, for the property. Right now, we have a total property, again, of that single parcel of 23 acres. The footprint of the building is about 2.86 acres, and the rest of the hard surface is five and a half. So right now, the property impervious exceeds the 30% for that parcel. We're at about 36.36%. Once we add the proposed parking, and it's going to go down in the southwest corner of the property, the parking lot is a net increase of just over half an acre, so that increases the percentage to about 38.74. Again, I think as Beth had put in her narrative, going back to the earlier slide, if we combined the both properties, we'd be actually under the 30%, but here we are. So that's the first variance, and to support the variance, I'll talk a little bit about the site plan. We're looking at adding the parking, as I said, just over the footprint of the ball fields to the west of the parking area. And the campus is kind of split into an upper and a lower, or the circulation is anyway. Buses, faculty, and some parents drop off in the north or in the east upper loop, and then the south loop is, supports deliveries and the majority of the parents that are dropping their kids off. Faculty members park down there as well. What this parking lot will do, it'll provide about 84 cars, and that'll take some of the congestion off of the street. We're going to take the parallel parking off of that drive as you exit onto, Starling Lake, sorry. And the elimination of those parallel stalls will certainly clear up some of the congestion. It'll allow people to get in and out a little quicker. It'll get the parking split in two so that the faculty, for the most part, will park in the new parking lot. Parents and visitors can park on the existing parking lot, internal to the Loop Drive. You all have a whole bunch of plans in your packet. Sorry to barrage you with all the paper. But just real quickly, again, the parking lot, we've satisfied, I think, the stormwater management. We went through any number of iterations on porous pavers. Can we increase, decrease pavement? Stormwater in this area is a little difficult. Just to the south, we have a water main easement. We have a gas pipe easement. Soils are very heavy, heavy clay. But the final solution to this was to put in a infiltration basin just to the west of the parking lot. It's going to be very low. It's only about 18 inches deep, so it's not going to have water in it for most of the time. Obviously, kids are going to be playing around that area. But it won't become, or it won't be maintained as a play area for the kids. That'll now be sanctioned to the north side of that parking lot. Landscaping, as Beth noted in her narrative, we've provided landscaping around the parking lots to screen it to the south, internal to the parking lot, and just screening in general. So I'm here for questions, if you have any.
Questions?
Sir, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for presenting tonight. The first is, there are two ball fields immediately to the southwest of the school. Does the City of Eden Prairie utilize either of those for its recreational leagues?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So they're exclusively used by the school for its programming?
Correct.
Okay. The second question I have, pivoting here to the soil type. You said it's soil type D? And infiltration seemed to be the best fit for that location. What is the rationale against using pervious concrete? And part of it is, I see this as an opportunity for the students to see sustainability in action and in structure. So I guess my larger question to you is, how will this broaden the sensibilities of the students and the teachers to sustainability?
Sure. The, we did look at porous pavers, we looked at porous concrete, and either situation, you're digging down quite a bit. Basically, you're making the infiltration below that media. The issue with not so much porous pavers, but more so with porous concrete, is the maintaining of that during the winter months. Sanding and salting are pretty difficult. You have to make sure that if it's a school-driven staff, they may know better. If it's an independent agent, or an independent plowing company or sanding company, they may forget and by accident put sand down. Then you're starting to clog up the porosity of the pavers. In this case, again, from a cost standpoint, the infiltration basin still has a pretty thick media compost and sand mix with the organics. But from an efficiency, from a watershed requirement as well, the D soils, we are really limited on what we could do there, and this option seemed to be the best. From a, from an educational standpoint, yeah, it's probably not as good as being able to bring them out and show them how it's functioning as perhaps porous pavement would be, but this is our best solution to it. That satisfies you?
Other questions? Commissioner?
Can you give just, I guess, a little bit of history on what has arisen to create this need? I don't know exactly when the school was built, but I imagine it's been around quite some time with that parking lot. So has anything changed in terms of either student population, or just the way people get to school, or, you know, parents and whatnot? What has created this kind of, to me, this is, you know, pretty significant increase from what you have now. I don't know if people are parking on the street, or what that situation is, but can you go into that a little bit?
Sure. The attitude on school design has changed quite a bit, and I don't need to get into the whole litany of it here, but over the years, less and less students are traveling by bus. My kids did only for a while, and then it became a norm that the parents would bring them. So there's more and more parent drop-off these days to schools, and so that's increased the parent circulation, primarily, again, on the lower portion of this campus. Buses are still there. There's as many buses as there were, but sometimes there's less kids, depending on the year. With the advent of the Spanish Immersion School over the last several years, that population has increased as well. So with all that in mind, yes, it's, the programmatic elements of the school have changed. The circulation, albeit hasn't changed, but it's gone from upper campus with the buses to the lower side with more parents. And so there is quite a amount of congestion coming in and off Starling Lake Road or Parkway. Trying to get people in and out in an orderly manner, as I mentioned, the parallel parking on the street was there, or on the drive, I should say, internal to the site, has been there just to try and gain any amount of parking, but it's really been another factor in congesting the out traffic. So this parking will, again, get the staff into the new parking because they're not leaving. They're there in the morning before the buses and most of the parents get there, and they're leaving after the parents have already left. So by getting them off and away from the main circulation, that should improve the circulation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
On this same subject, and it's a good one, I've had some experience at the school years back, and not so much in the past two years, because my relatives, my grandchildren, going in and out are now in other schools. But one of the big concerns was that parallel parking. It's always, it's been right along the drive, all the way from the entrance to the building, all the way down almost to the Parkway. And it's not only bad trying to get out of the parking lot for the parents and then out of the property, but for buses coming in, I would have imagined that, and I haven't seen as much in the last couple of years, so I can't comment quite as much as I would with the Spanish Immersion. But the other thought I had, though, is I was watching and seeing some new signs at the entrance to the driveway the past week, and I know that the Southwest Transit Service has made some changes in how they're picking people up, and I'm not clear, maybe this isn't affecting that same location. But I wondered whether or not one of the stops for the bus for that purpose was at that drive, and I don't know if anybody from the city knows that.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Might be something to at least take note of. It may not be an issue, but if it is happening, that means there's more demand for the parking in that area, and that might need to be discussed, but since it hasn't come up yet, maybe it's not an issue. I just wanted to raise it because I know there should change. But then finally, I just wanted to say, one of the things I think this new parking lot could provide in terms of just the overall operation of that area, is simply getting the cars, like you just said, of the teachers and other staff into that other area. It's always very confusing in the morning, this was for people like myself who weren't there every day, but were there maybe once a week, or whatever, to try to find a parking place, get the children out. Lots of people liked to come right up to the building, but that was always full, so you couldn't quite do that. Anyway, it is, it is a worry of mine, just knowing that this is a busy piece of change for the whole operation there, but a good one, I think. The children themselves may need to be aware that there's more there, and I don't know what your timeline. Maybe you could tell us what your expectation, if you get through the process here, when are you thinking you might be able to start?
At this point, we're looking to start when we can get permitted. Watershed permit has been granted. We're in this process now. If things go as planned, hopefully, we'd start in August and with a completion date before snow flies in October. Because it's somewhat separate from, again, the proper circulation, if you will, we can work on it a little later into the school season. It is worth noting, this site is always full, even through the summertime. It's a functioning school even during the summertime, so nothing much changes between summer, fall, spring, and winter.
Yeah, in that regard, other members of the commission may not know, but there's some meeting room space in Oak Point, and neighborhood organizations and others that want to have meeting space often approach the school, and I've been in there many times for meetings in the evenings even, so. And sometimes you're running into people who are still leaving from school activities.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Farr?
Thanks, Mr. Pomeroy, for your presentation. A few questions. One of them is following up on Commissioner De Sanctus's comment about the ball fields. This will be the only elementary school in our city that won't have ball fields now. All the rest of them do. So is there something going on at the school district where they feel ball fields aren't required as a programmatic requirement, or outdoor space in general for the students? Because we're getting more grades in this school than past, right? We're one through six now, and it'll be one through five after the sixth graders go to CMS?
No, there is no motivation by the school district to eliminate ball fields, certainly. On this campus, it's a balance between parking and open space. The playground, I'll go back to the map, but the playground lies just to the north of the proposed parking. There will be a small, maybe a very small youth-type soccer field size just to the north of the infiltration basin. Again, it's a fairly low basin, and it won't be filled with water unless it's a gully washer that we have the day before. And if, again, you know the site, that playground, the Gaga pit, the hard surface play are always busy. The ball field's not so much, especially with the ag lime. That tends to be more of a maintenance issue. These days, it's more and more toward multipurpose, just open grass area where you can do T-ball, you can do soccer, you can do kickball, whatever. You don't necessarily need a backstop and ag lime.
I would suggest to you that possibly the parents and residents nearby who use this school may want some outreach on that topic, if their school is going to be the only one that doesn't have such a large outdoor space, if not just for baseball, softball, but for those other activities, you said. Just repurposing that open space can be important, especially as you're growing the population with increased grades.
Noted.
So I think that might be important. Second issue I have, we talked about the ingress and egress and how busy it is leaving the site, and you're widening the driveway, I noticed, with two outbound lanes, which...
We needed to, we eliminated that as part of the process. We... It's shown on one of the diagrams. It's not shown on the plans now.
Okay, it was in the narrative, that's why I caught it there.
Okay, alright.
That's fine.
Oh, really? It was eliminated because, and again, I don't know if we can go back to the plan, but the parking lot just to the south, that, no, I can't, just to the south of Starling Lake Parkway, there's an accessory parking lot. With the addition of the turn lane, we had shown earlier a turn lane in, widening the drive to the east. City staff came back and said, if you do that, you'd really need to realign the south accessory parking drive to align with that, and it became such a convoluted issue with accessibility. Starling Lake Parkway is a fairly steep slope street, then it just became so cumbersome that we eliminated that part of the project.
Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, that just shows up on our graphic. It was in our handout, so that's fine. So I guess more to my point where I was going with it, is that that exit will still be congested and won't even have that flow left and right like I thought it was going to have, and you eliminated the parallel parking around that egress point. So my question is, for that new parking lot, you have two entrances and exits. And especially if it's only for staff, why don't you just have the northern entrance and exit to this parking lot so that the southern one, which is closer to the exit driveway to Starling Lake, doesn't prohibit or cause further conflict with stacking on outbound vehicles? There seems to be easy circulation, in a loop-type circulation. If you just had that one driveway on the north to provide entrance and exiting from the parking lot, save money, and it would save impervious surface area.
Sure. Early iterations did show just the one entrance. School staff felt the second southerly entrance, or drive in and out of the parking lot, was necessary, whether it be from a function, or again, with staff being there first and then leaving last. If programmatically that's the follow-through, then that shouldn't be a congestion issue with parents that are leaving on the drive during polling in November, during open houses. It's a matter of trying to get out of there. Everybody is as orderly as possible. But programmatically, they may find that they need to cone off, kind of like what they do on the internal side of the parking lot, is in order to maintain the circulation out, maybe they need to temporarily cone off the southern exit. But during the majority of the time where staff is parked there, the two entrances, I think, seem to work well.
Okay. It just seemed excessively convenient. My third and last comment right now is sight lighting. In your narrative, it says you're going to use new LED light fixtures, which is great. Could you tell us if the existing parking lots are already converted to LED, or if they're still HID, and if there's a conversion plan in place?
They are not LED, to my knowledge. The school district, as to my understanding, does have a long-range plan to modify those over to LEDs. Not a part of this project, but they do have a standard that we're moving toward.
Okay. Could you tell me if they're existing high-pressure sodium, the orange light, or if they're metal halide, the white light now?
They're, I believe they're metal halide. I don't think they're HPS.
Okay, so from a color standpoint, it won't be a huge difference, but okay, it'd be nice to get them consistent sometime in the future. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Clear questions? Commissioner De Sanctus?
Mr. Pomeroy, I have another question regarding the paragraph on stormwater management, and it indicates here the project will be reviewed at the Riley Purgatory Water Creek Shed, Watershed District March Board Meeting. That is not a typo? So that, we're looking at March of 2020?
No, it's been approved. It was reviewed in March.
Okay, so grammatically it says the project will be reviewed at, future tense?
It has been.
That's a correction, okay.
Yep. Yeah, I apologize. Whether it's my narrative or Beth's, we've been kind of working on this since last summer, so. March could have been, yeah, 1918, whatever.
So just to clarify, the south parking lot, that will remain as just continued to be an overflow lot?
Yes.
Julie, do the planning report tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You can sit down.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, the request this evening is twofold. It is for a variance to exceed the impervious surface requirement of 30% in the Shoreland District, and it is also a site plan approval for the entire site because of the addition of the parking lot. And that parking lot is currently not reflected in the existing site plan approval. Staff is recommending approval of both the variance and the site plan. The variance does meet the three-part test for reasonableness. It does not alter the character of the neighborhood, and it does have unique characteristics that come into play in that the school was constructed after the 30%, or excuse me, the school was constructed before the 30% requirement was in place, and as Mr. Pomeroy discussed, the school does own two adjacent parcels. So if that invisible, to-the-naked-eye property line was not there, the site certainly functions and feels as if it meets that 30% requirement. From a site plan perspective, the new parking lot does meet all of the city standards for screening and parking lot design, and as I said, staff is recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for staff.
Questions? Yeah, Commissioner Mitty?
Julie, this additional seven-acre parcel that's owned by the school district, is that a piece that is going to be rezoned under the parks and open space rezoning that's happening in a few weeks?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it is not because it is owned by the school district. The city is only proposing as part of the parks rezoning to rezone city-owned park properties and open space properties.
What is that currently zoned? I guess what are both, and it might have been in the staff report, but no.
The property that's owned by the school district is zoned public, and schools are permitted use in the public zoning district.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Commissioner Farr?
I have a question for the city engineer. On the south side of the property, there are two utility easements running parallel to each other. One is a water main, I believe, protected by an easement, and adjacent to that is a gas pipeline easement that doesn't look like it has any pipe utility in it at this point in time. Under your utility plan, they're proposing to cross both easements with a storm sewer buried about five feet deep. So questions to you are, is the gas pipeline easement vacated, and we just don't know that yet? Or if not, if it could get a gas line in the future, does that conflict with the depth and location of these proposed storm sewer? And the second question would be the same for the water main. Is there any issue you have with the water main and the storm sewer crossing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, they would have to look at that elevation, and I assume their civil engineer did that. That was, that was known that there was a conflict there, and they generally designed around that. So I presume that the gas main, it could be fairly deep in there because that's an old roadway. It could be, presumably, it probably could be deeper than normal, but I assume that they potholed that, and I think they actually did pothole that, because one of our meetings we had, they were going to do that, so. If you could verify that.
I will. I'll jump back in. We've been in touch with them, and this goes back to last fall, but they do want us to pothole it again before we start construction, just to verify the depth on the gas mains. They had mentioned that they're probably about three to four feet deep, or it was three to four feet deep. So we'll go under the gas main, over the water main.
You're going to go under the existing gas main, so there is a gas pipe there now?
Yes.
And you'll go over the top of the water main?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for against this project, please do so now. Nobody? Okay. I'll take, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing. Alright. Commissioner Kirk has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Further discussion from the commission members? Anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve variance number 2018-02 based on the staff report dated July 2, 2019, and the plan stamped dated June 28, 2019.
A motion for Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I also move to recommend approval of the site plan review on 23.05 acres, and based on the staff report dated July 2, 2019, and plan stamped dated June 28, 2019, and finding in conditions in the final order number 2018-02.
Second motion for Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second to this?
I will second.
A second for Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Alright. Project is approved. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation this evening. Alright, moving on, we have a second public hearing. This is for Southwest Transit North Bus Entrance/Office Addition. This is a request for a planned unit development district amendment on 10.05 acres, site plan review on 10.05 acres. Will the proponent of the project please step forward? Good evening. If you would, state your name for the record and tell us about your project, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Len Simic. I'm the CEO of Southwest Transit. Tonight, we are in front of you seeking our plan for our garage expansion. The expansion is needed really for two reasons. One is to, it would become our new corporate office for Southwest Transit. The need for this has come about with the light rail coming into town. They have taken our building that's currently at Southwest Station, so this would consolidate all of our staff at the garage facility that we have today. The second part of this is actually kind of cleaning up an issue that we have at the garage currently, where we're backing 45-foot vehicles out every morning. So this would give us an opportunity to pull the buses in and then exit out the back of the building, so no more backing up those vehicles. This evening, I have Gary Hay with Hay Dobbs, who will walk through the changes to the building that we are proposing, and I'll be here for any questions you may have. So I'll turn that over to Gary.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Gary Hay with Hay Dobbs Architects. Well, we wanna thank you all for taking the time to listen to our, uh, project here. Um, oops. See if I can get it to go back. Okay, so we'll just do a quick overview of the, uh, site plan. Uh, you may remember that, uh, we came before you last fall to do a PUD amendment on parking. At that time, uh, we were unsure of, uh, the funding for the light rail project and the final negotiations for the Sou- Southwest Transit Corporate Office Building. So while we took into consideration the project that we're going to present tonight in the planning and the stormwater, uh, maintenance on the site in our project last fall, um, uh, now with light rail moving forward, we can implement this project. But the way we're dealing with the stormwater management was taken care of in the previous application, and in fact, we had about thirty-seven hundred extra square feet of impervious surface to give us a little wiggle room in terms of what the final design of this project would be. So in the diagram, uh, let's see if I can point here. I guess it won't go into the screen. So the magen- the large magenta block is the north entry, the north bus entry that Len was describing, in order to get buses to pull directly into the facility from the north rather than currently circulating around the building from the south and either pulling directly in or backing into the, uh, center B garage. That addition will be, on the ground floor, will be the north bus entry, and then office space above. The building itself is about one hundred thousand, two hundred fifty-six square feet, and we're increasing the footprint in this project by about seven hundred and fifty square feet. The staff reports about twenty-seven hundred square feet of additional space, and the difference between the seven hundred and fifty on the ground floor is the second floor addition above the addition and then over the existing building roof area that we're constructing space. We're also, as we consolidate staff, we're consolidating the building entries. So on the east side of the office space, we're adding, uh, just a vestibule so we can add a secure entry into the facility. And then there's also a magenta block on the west side of the property, which is a gasoline fuel storage tank, which will be implemented in this phase of the project but was approved in the, uh, previous work that was brought before you last fall. Uh, the next diagram, uh, that's before you can see in the, uh, large magenta block, that's the, uh, bus entry. And as we put the bus entry in and we continue the driveway out to the north, from the plan that you approved last fall, we'll lose approximately four parking spaces in order to get the drive lane put into, uh, the north entry. The site itself, on a regular basis, still has additional parking to meet the need on the site. As is pointed out in the staff report, um, during the state fair, other special events like the Ryder Cup or other similar types of special, uh, situations which Southwest provides service, uh, beyond its normal routine, uh, the parking gets to be quite excessive on the site for, uh, the number of drivers. Uh, when we get to the next slide, we'll also show that there's an existing mezzanine against, uh, up above, oh, this doesn't go into the screen there. Uh, so just to the immediate west of the, uh, magenta block for the north entry, that's the current bus wash. There's a mezzanine, uh, inside the building, and we'll be us- utilizing that space, and we'll describe that a little bit on the, uh, next slide. Inside the building, uh, there is a new elevator that we're installing as part of this project to get accessible, uh, access, if you will, to the, uh, mezzanine level. And then while that larger new office entry block, that's really just highlighting the canopy that's over the entry, and it's really just an eight-foot by eight-foot, uh, secure entryway. Uh, other work that's taking place in the project are new, uh, trench drains. Uh, when they built the garage, uh, there were no drains that were put in, so in the wintertime when buses are parked there and you've got the heat from the engines that stays warm in that space, melts the snow, and then it just puddles in the space. So we're gonna alleviate that. And that'll also keep all that material from coming back out into the site as well. Uh, we're also adding a new, um, uh, restroom as part of the maintenance bay. And so, uh, that, from the ground floor standpoint, that kinda covers the overall general approach to it. Um, on the next slide here, you can see that on the first floor, the existing office space, really, you can kinda see the gray block of space in the existing office and driver's area. Today, that continues all the way over to the, uh, bus wash. We're removing, uh, the portion of the existing office building, extending the bus walk, or not the bus wash, but the bus entry to the north, adding a stairway to the second floor, and then reconfiguring, uh, the areas. Uh, I would also add that we've met with your buildings division here with the building inspector, and the plans that we're presenting to you essentially have all been approved by the building department. And once we finalize those, we'll be able to submit for a, a permit. You can see on the second floor plan on the right-hand side of the screen, the offices, uh, on the second floor are really the corporate offices, so, uh, persons that are displaced from the first floor will move to the second floor. Uh, the CEO will move to this space, and it really becomes just other financial offices on the second floor, restrooms. And then there's, uh, a new, uh, training facility above the existing bus wash, which is the, uh, green block that you can see on the lower left of the right-hand screen. Today, you can see the building, uh, is predominantly on the north elevation where this work will occur is, uh, you know, double T exterior concrete, uh, panels. And then the main floor, the ground floor office space is an exposed aggregate, uh, eight-foot panel. The lowered, uh, elevation is the proposed, uh, north elevation, where we're adding, uh, the north bus entry with the, uh, office space up above, and then, um, uh, with the ex- remaining single-story area with the new, uh, uh, entry into the building. As we started to look at a vocabulary and start to look at the zoning requirements, um, we continued over, uh, in contrast to the light beige, uh, exposed aggregate concrete with, uh, a dark iron spot brick to give more contrast and accentuate the new building, and really start to also pull in the, uh, corporate, uh, image and colors of Southwest Transit. Uh, the roof heights over the building vary, so the front portion of the office space is a little bit lower than the back portion. And that, while the roof elevation is at the same height, the, the taller screen area will serve to screen the mechanical equipment that's sitting up on top of the, uh, roof. Essentially, we're using, um, uh, metal panels on, uh, the back portion of the building. Uh, while we're highlighting the men- uh, the orange just as a varying color, uh, we don't intend to use the orange. It's just, uh, an example. Uh, the brick, and then we're doing a lock seam, uh, metal panel, uh, to accent some details, and then a lock seam metal panel, uh, proposed over the existing one portion of the building. And I think Julie will touch a little bit more on that, uh, single story of the building. As you could see from the previous slide, it's a, the building today is a type one material, and your zoning requires a type one material on the ground floor of the building. That material will remain, it's structural, it's an insulated panel. Uh, but in order to, uh, look at how we might enhance the facility and enhance the corporate image of this site, um, we had to look at a lightweight material that we can fasten over the existing precast concrete without having to dig out, go down to the footings, expand the footings in order to support brick or stone or another, uh, material. This is an illustrative route, illustrative view from, uh, County Road 62, uh, where you can see the, uh, stand, the, uh, precast concrete, and then you can start to see the, uh, uh, corporate colors of Southwest Transit, and how that might look as you start to approach off County Road 62. And of course, this particular view is almost a pure elevation, but you'll really start to get a sense of the three-dimensional aspect of this building as you, uh, come in particular from the east heading west on 62. And as you pull into the building, or into the parking lot, and you start to look at the building, you can start to see that the building is articulated somewhat like the existing building where there's varying roof heights, a variety of different materials. And then, uh, where the new entry is, where we've used, uh, a weathered metal panel in that portion of it to really call up and highlight the entry piece. And then also, uh, there's a collaboration space in the office area on the second floor that projects out, uses that same material, uh, and starts sorta knit that whole building composition together.
So with that, we will open it up for questions. Great. Thank you, and questions? Commissioner De Sanctus.
That was a very thoughtful presentation, and I do like the aesthetics of the proposed building. What I was wondering, is there an opportunity with this construction to introduce solar as a supplementation source of energy in your operation?
We've, typically on other projects that we've explored, uh, solar, uh, the cost of the solar for what we gain out of it, in a project of this size, it, it becomes a little bit cost prohibitive. Um, I think there's opportunity, given the scale of the building, uh, you know, in the future, to look at, uh, you know, significantly more panels in which you could balance that sort of cost and return, you know, initial cost versus that, uh, return piece. But, uh, we've not, uh, looked at, there's an opportunity, I think, in the future, uh, but we've not looked at it as part of this project.
Questions? Julie, we, we doing the planner's report?
Yes, sir. As stated, the applicant is requesting a, uh, approval of a planned unit development as well as a site plan review. So as Mr. Hay mentioned in his introductory comments, this is essentially a phase two of a project that was started, I believe, within the last year. I think you said last fall. You were before the city asking for that. And there are not any waivers that are proposed as a part of this request this evening because those waivers were proactively addressed with last fall's, uh, request. The expansion and proposal that's before you this evening does meet the landscape requirements. In fact, it exceeds the landscape requirements of the city code, and the building materials and the architectural requirements of city code are met and exceeded as well. Staff is going to continue to work with the applicant to understand the application of the class two materials at the ground floor to make sure that they comply with city code requirements, but we're confident that we will get that, um, worked out prior to first reading at city council. So staff is recommending approval of the PUD and the site plan review, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I stat one, the, uh, I don't remember all the waivers from last fall. If this had come forward at that time as part of that process, would you have any concerns about the waivers that were granted at that time?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, no. Those waivers that were granted, uh, previously, uh, were all mitigated and addressed through that review, so staff does not have any concerns about that at all.
Thanks. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for against this project, please do so now. Let's see, any? Entertaining motion to close the public hearing? It's all moved. I have a motion, Commissioner Farr. Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Weber will give the second, too. All those who favor closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Mitty.
Um, I just wanted to comment that, uh, I agree with Commissioner De Sanctus, uh, that I think the architecture here is really nice. Uh, so I just wanted to commend, um, Southwest Transit and, uh, Hay Dobbs on this. I, I really like the use of the zinc. I know there's cheaper metals that, that could've been chosen over that, in addition to the core tent. Those are some of my two favorite metals. So I think it looks really nice, and it's definitely improving, uh, a not very attractive building right now, so.
I agree, that does, it does look really nice. And when you showed the east-west elevation, that was striking. Thank you for the work on it. Mr. Chairman, I just wanna simply echo those same sentiments myself. I think those, uh, class two materials are frankly an upgrade over to what's there now, and are, I'm fully supportive of that, uh, change in, in materials. Anyone who wanna make a motion, ayes? Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll go ahead. I would like to recommend approval of Southwest Transit North Bus Entry Office Addition based on the staff report dated July 2, 2019, and plan stamped dated June 11, 2019.
Second.
Alright, a motion, Commissioner Farr, a second for Commissioner Kirk. All those who favor approving, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the project is approved. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on this evening, we have a planner's report.
No, sir.
Alright, do we have any members' report? Does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Alright, motion?
Second.
A second, all those who favor adjourn in the meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.